We're gonna start the meeting now. Normally, we approve the agenda as said in vacation and roll call, but it's not on my list tonight, so we're just gonna go right into it. This is the Simmons Township Trustee's work session, and we have no old business, so we're gonna go right into new business. And the first item on the agenda is meet house, potential uses for the house and property. I think that's why most everybody's here. So, how you doing?
First of all, welcome, everybody, and thanks for coming.
Yes. We don't have name tags up in front of us. If you don't know us, I'm Ken Bryant. Phil Beck and Jody Lee, some trustees. Mr. Joe Grassi is our fiscal officer. You know Ken? Hopefully. Everybody should know Ken.
Shall we go?
And we have Fire Chief Hubert here tonight.
Do you briefly listen? Is that we go around the round?
Yeah. Okay. You guys wanna go start over here? You identify yourself? So, just for me, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so...
I wasn't either.
There are new additions.
We live on the side of the Mead Farm.
Okay. Next door.
On the north side.
Okay. Yes. Familiar with that? Okay.
Sid Edelwald.
Okay.
Eugene Alor, structural engineer living at the Mead House.
Great.
I'm Jerissa Durs, the architect. Our line's Design Company. We're viewing this project.
And you're down here from Columbus?
From Columbus.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Robert Becker. I live on the side.
South side.
South side, I guess that is.
Okay. Yes. All right. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Dave Ziver, former owner.
Okay.
The reason why we wanted you guys to be involved in our committee is because you live next to the property, and we think it's very important that you are informed and you have a say in what goes on at the Mead property. So, thank you for being on our committee.
Okay. Kim, we have an agenda. Somebody can present, or are we just gonna discuss?
I think Jerissa just was wanting to know what our thoughts are on uses, the potential uses of that house, because she needs to know from a design standpoint, and so does Eugene. Like, how do they, what kind of improvements are needed at that house to accommodate the uses that we have envisioned for that piece of property?
All right. So, we wanna talk about uses first.
Right. I have some plans.
If I understand it correctly, even though I missed the last meeting, you have done a similar property?
Uh, we've worked on several houses.
Okay. That are historic to me.
But it's work outlets that meant to be owned and wanted to convert to a similar use.
Okay. That is excellent background and experience.
Yeah. The first question has always been, on the second floor, what do you want to do on the second floor? And when Owen says, well, we don't know if it's gonna be front of the public or an office, it's like, well, there's the big difference.
Yes.
With the uses and what happens.
I would think from a load standpoint, structural engineer, I normally start at the bottom and work up, because the problem is brought to us was that this was just like a stacked stone basement that, over time, maybe water got in, erosion and so on washed away some of the substance between stacked stones, and maybe it wasn't as structurally sound as it was when it was first built. And I would know as an engineer myself, not a structural engineer, an aerodynamic engineer, but it has to carry the load of everything above it, and...
He's in the chair.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Force your shoes.
Yes. So, to address that point, it's very important for us, you know, because of the fact that we're trying to evaluate based upon what kind of load capacity you're going to be there.
Okay.
So, it's just residential, it's office, it's assembly, if you're expecting, how many people you're expecting to be there. Those are all parts structurally and mechanically that we would need to know and understand, so we can kinda look at that in terms of what the existing is doing, kind of evaluate the existing, if there are issues or the problems there, which we have identified a few items there, and then some deterioration, how we need to be repaired and fixed, and termite, we've seen some termite down there as well.
Fair.
And dry rot, that's been some items there that shows signs of settlement. If you look in the front, and everybody's been discussing that before, the settlement that's occurred in the floor itself, which really kind of gives us a combination of things. There's some termite damage, there's some dry rot, there's also some settlement that's occurred at the joint location where the joists can, the walls are setting, so that piece, that element there needs to be retrofitted. But how far we go for retrofit is based on how much load we're gonna put down.
Okay. Let me ask our chief, what, at current usage, or what was the current usage? Do we have a limitation, a number of people can be in there?
Well, yes. Right now, forty-nine is the max that you're going to be able to put in the building as it sits, not taking into consideration what the architects find as far as what the structural stability of the building is.
Right.
Okay. So, the amount of people, if the building was in great shape, forty-nine people.
Okay.
Now, if you wanted to put them upstairs, that's a whole different thing, because once you elevate them upstairs, then we have to have an elevator, and we have to have a sprinkler system to protect those people, even if it, even to go upstairs at all.
Okay. So, the forty-nine is restricted to the first level?
The first level.
Okay. That's residential.
No, that's commercial.
That was the doctor's office, kinda, in the middle.
Right. So, if it was, even if it was a restaurant, or whatever, it would be forty-nine people, unless the building was protected.
Okay.
And then the upstairs then would require two means of egress to get out of it if you let the public upstairs.
Okay. So, fire escape or some...
Yeah. Fire escape and then a second set of stairs where there and an elevator, because the amount of money that you're probably gonna spend on the building compared to the value of the building, then it requires it to be brought up to code based upon the investment into the property.
So, if we, like, say we use it for, like, small usage, like, small parties or small whatever, so if they wanted to, like, get ready upstairs, we would have to, what would we have to do? Just like, a very small, like, ten people?
Doesn't matter. Anytime you take, just, if you open it to the public, if you open the second floor to the public, then you have to, then it's open to the public, because you can't, you can't control that. So, you can tell them, oh, I'll only put ten people upstairs, but absent a security guard, that ten people could swell to ninety people.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think they'd fit, but, okay. Yeah, I understand.
We understand. So, does anybody, Dave, or anybody new on our committee, do you have any ideas of how you see that building being used? Do you have, do you have any? No? Yes? I don't wanna put you on the spot, because you're new, so...
Office space, it would be a lot of one.
Yeah. Anything that would keep...
A what? Office. Office space, okay.
The volume of people really being over there. I mean, there's, you know, quite a few now with the park being there, that people are over there, but it's been kinda nice and a quiet kind of area, and depending on the type of business that you put in.
Right.
You know, drawing a lot of different people in that area.
So, when...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Is the intent to be a revenue-producing function of the property?
As of right now, we're thinking that we might be able to rent it out for small parties, for, like, graduation party, or for a birthday party. I mean, nothing, I don't, as of right now, I don't think we see anything big, just like a small gathering.
Rehearsal dinner.
Yeah. Maybe something like that.
I see so many wedding pictures being taken over there.
Yeah. Oh, outside, right?
And senior pictures are there a lot.
Yeah.
I'm sure they would love to have rehearsal dinner, or something like, what is it, the pro monte? It's over there in Milford, that we were bent and added a house.
I did a map that I just looked at historic house wedding menus off the map.
At a rehearsal, a wedding shower.
Yeah. Like, something like that. Like, nothing.
Yeah.
But just something that...
But basically, they actually served a tea, a three-quarters kind of tea in there, and it set up, and they controlled, they were there to control that you didn't wander through the second floor and things, because you got to see the antique flavor of the floor.
I think, like, about a year, two years ago, we had a wine testing there, a wine tasting. Did you guys, were you bothered by the wine tasting?
We drove over.
Okay.
No. No, it was pretty. We saw the tents and stuff and the lights. It was very pretty. I mean, it didn't go to late hours.
No. We wouldn't do that.
Yeah. It was nice.
No bands outside, rock in the neighborhood.
No.
Maybe a little music here and there, like violin, or nothing.
Another question. Are the rooms large enough to accommodate a larger recreational activity for meetings?
Well, that's the question I have a different slant on. With this, with this structure, being recognized by State of Ohio as a historic structure, what are the limitations as to what we can do?
As a historic structure, you actually have some benefit that, as long as the Fire Chief is agreeable, we don't have to, like, need to let it lock everything. Like, we can substitute some things for others, as long as the house is as stable as it is now.
Right.
I'm concerned about the visiting room around upstairs, because the house rooms are very small, so I just can't imagine, even if they wanted to, there's not enough to get them to do.
That is kinda my thinking. Is there any restrictions? I mean, I know you've got load-bearing walls and everything inside. Is there anything that could be done that would open it up and make a different kitchen arrangement with an assembly area or something like that for a venue?
But I'm not sure you would really need to do that. Wherever, over there, pro monte, but down here is maybe three or four small tables in each room, and two or three people at each table, and it was just a, you know, a nice setting, and they hadn't disturbed any of the room.
At the Davis Day House in Mead County, that's what they did. They set aside one room as the tea house room, and that's exactly what they did, some small tables. And that was the tea room. They also had a building addition, so they could get a bigger room with more tables.
Winters might be the township's best avenue when it comes to construction and code and all that, is to basically use the house as the top of the wedding cake, but the wedding cake is really an addition that might be out, more like an arboretum, that the actual party, or the dance, or the whatever, happens in the backyard. It's attached to the building, but the building itself is really being used for its historic view, its historic value, and that way, you're not having to do a whole lot, bring it up to code, because where you're putting your place of public assembly is out in the...
Okay. For venues.
Right. Exactly. So, if you have an event center, it's really there, but you're using the house as...
As the draw.
Yeah. As the draw.
Do you put it a separate structure from here?
Most of the facilities that I researched, they have an historic house, and then if the wedding party is larger, they put up a temporary tent. I think I heard discussions when we first started this project about building a permanent building, like, where the old nursing home used to be, on the other side of the pergola, which would make this facility different from a lot of the other houses that's the permanent facility, that would have the catering kitchen, the restaurants, everything built in.
Same way through Whitehall down in Louisville. It's very similar. It's built around the same time, turn of the century, and it's been turned into a venue, and they put tents up outside. It's been a while since I've been down there. I first started here, Dan, I've talked to them a couple times, and they have wedding parties, and the house is bigger, and the house has been added on to down there.
Okay.
I'd be worth a trip down.
Okay. You said Louisville, did you?
Louisville.
I thought I was familiar with the Whitehall area in Kentucky. It was just south of Lexington.
I see it.
But, okay. If you say Louisville, I'm looking Louisville.
Somehow it might be connected.
We have a really cool concept like that as well out here in Hamilton Township. I think it's called the Lily Farm, or the Lily Pad, whatever, but it's, basically, they took a barn, and that's the main structure, and then they put almost a covered, large pergola that's outside where most of the event happens, but then they use that. So, it's kind of a mixed-use kind of thing that it does. But it then also allows it to be used pretty much twelve months out of the year. So, if you're unlimited to, you know, with tents, you're pretty limited to good weather, and as you know, in Cincinnati, you see the cold, or it's really hot.
Okay. Okay. The one thing I do wanna say, I'm looking at Whitehall now, it's very pretty. I think the only thing we need to make sure when we're planning this is we respect the neighborhoods. Like, so if we decide to do something like this, they can't have music past a certain time, or they have to have this so many decibels, or, because we, a lot of people use that park, and we still, because our taxpayers pay for that park, we wanna make sure that it's accessible to them, too. So, I don't wanna, like...
And we have a lot of wildlife over here, too.
Yeah. And so, and we'd have to move our parking, and, you know, additional parking. So, I mean, I would love to see it as a wedding venue for small weddings, or, you know what I mean? Or something like that. Not, not anything, like, large.
Do they have scout venues in Hamilton Township?
No.
Or is that just the scout barns just in the back?
I think they just parked their...
Trailer.
Trailer there, outside the barn, and maybe have some stuff in the barn.
Well, yeah, they ain't stuffed in the barn, but the trailer's moved.
Oh, the trailer's over here.
Yeah. The trailer's right here. I had to move it, because I didn't...
Two days ago.
It's a park sit. I didn't think the trailer...
It's over there, and not, maybe they load it and take it on weekend trips and so on.
Yeah.
It's in and out of over there.
Yeah.
Would that be a suitable venue for scout games, and have you seen it?
Oh, yeah.
I would, yes. Once, once we have it identified as to what we wanna do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're set up as a venue. And wasn't there any white dudes?
So, the gut feel I have right now to this point, whatever venue it is, is, A, we wanna repair the basement to support the load, and we wanna restrict things to the first floor, so that we don't have to get into the elevator, sprinkler system, the double egress, and all that kinda stuff, which should drive costs prohibitively on what we're doing.
And that was the first phase.
That's the sense I have. I don't wanna speak for everybody.
So, what would we do with the second floor, then?
Caretaker's office, or an office, or something that would limit it?
I think you still have to fix it up if it's an office, right?
Well, again, like, there's, because it's a historic building, you know, there's things that we, as the township, as the owner, can do to it versus opening it up to the public. So, you know, I have a feeling that there's, I've never been upstairs, so I'm talking about...
I've never been upstairs either.
I think it's tight.
It's really tight, except for that one room, like, when you go up the grand staircase off to the right. That's a little bit larger, just 'cause it's got the fireplace in the back. How many bathrooms are there? Oh, in there? Okay. Have you guys been in? I know you have.
Yeah, they've all, they've...
Has everybody been in?
Well...
So, maybe we should hook you up with Bill, and Bill should take him a tour.
Okay.
So, you can see what it looks like.
When we had the Cincinnati Horticultural Society occupying that space, wasn't their office upstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had it up, like, you go up the staircase, I think it was down the railing, and it was like that first bedroom in the front of the house.
You had the two rooms, I think, on that side of the house.
Yeah.
You had it over there.
And storage at the end.
Right.
You mean attic above the second floor?
Third floor.
Because one side is a single room.
Okay.
So, you could make that a wider opening, and you could use it more like a single room.
Did it work out, or were there problems?
Well, I think there's a lot of storage when they moved down. They get a lot of stuff out of there, so...
I guess we need to start with phases. So, phase one is what do we wanna do for phase one?
I think we can't use it at all until we fix the support structure, which is really dependent upon what we wanna do with it. Okay? So, that's where I wanted to concentrate, 'cause, I mean, right now, it's sitting there as a white elephant.
If you're just doing the first floor, you're just gonna have a lot of problems down there.
Yeah, we can do that in the basement area, the first floor. That's what we would have to do to increase the, increase the load capacity, but we still would have to do some repairs down there, some of the existing floors.
Yeah, there's some things that need to be done no matter what the house is for.
Okay.
So, that would definitely be in phase one, and then structural reinforcement, just so that you can have maximum flexibility on what I have to do for a support.
And I think that's what I would recommend to trustees, the fact is, the foundation piece of it, if you intend to keep the building, you know, we can't shore things up now, but if you intend to keep it long-term, the foundation, bringing it up, you know, from there is your best ways.
Yep.
Fixing that foundation so it supports the structure.
Correct.
So, that should probably be phase one. Here's my question to you guys. You have done projects like this before. What do you see the building as?
Well, oddly enough, we are working on two other similar projects that just happened to, and the, one is for the city of Columbus, one is for the city of New Albany, and they all belong to the same thing, you know, to be able to open up a house for rentals for small events.
Okay.
And if the property happens to have a large barn on it, they want to fix the barn up, so that larger events can go into the barn.
Mm-hmm.
And it seems to be universal.
Wow.
Yeah, barn, but it seems to be really popular still.
Maybe we need to build a big barn. Have you guys been to the Linderman Farm? It's just the north of us in Warren County.
Is it a wedding venue?
Yeah. I've been to a few retirement parties and things like that up there. It's like a barn.
Yeah. I've been on the outside of it.
It's beautiful.
It is. It is a beautiful property.
But they have a lot of land there, wouldn't they?
It does. There's a huge need for venue space, a huge need all over the Cincinnati area. It's really hard to find a venue to have anything, especially a smaller wedding, or reception, or anything.
Okay.
That little event center in Loveland, that was an old tire warehouse, it's now an event center, it goes for five thousand dollars a night, and then...
Just receptions?
No, no.
No.
Downtown Loveland.
Oh, okay.
The Landy, it's five thousand dollars a night, and you have to provide everything. So, that's just the Loveland.
That's just the building?
Just the building.
So, what I see...
Downtown Loveland, it's called the Landy.
Is it to the right, behind, like, Cocoa Bites?
Close to Cindy's.
Cindy's.
Yeah, behind Cocoa Bites, right. Next to Ruby's.
It's actually very...
Oh, it is very pretty. It is a very pretty building. They've done a wonderful job remodeling it, but if you, if you just check around at the different places, like the Lily Pad place that's on Hamilton Township, and this one that you were talking about in Warren County, they're incredibly pricey.
What's the one in Warren County? Can you call again? Linder, no.
Linderman Farm?
Linderman Farm. So, maybe we should take tours. So, all's I have to say is, whatever we decide to do, I wanna make sure that we make it first-class.
Well...
I, I think we owe it to that building.
I don't want to have to come back, let's say we fix the foundation and structure to support the load, I don't wanna have to come back and work on it again if we want to expand our horizon. So, I would like to think that we do it once and for all, and it can, it can maybe blend, run the risk of over, over cost, you know, to get something that maybe we do or we don't, but I don't like the idea of having to come back after you've done something and work the first-floor level and so on, to where we get something out of it as a venue, or otherwise, and then have to come back through the venue to get the basement and improve it for additional structure. So, I think, right now, what would it take for us to increase the capacity in the first floor beyond forty-nine?
Well, more than anything else, protect it. Sprinklers.
Okay. Now, do we have to, do we have to put that in now?
No, 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 no. No, it's not like someone you're doing. It's means of egress, and, you know, and they can apply, like I said, I haven't been over there in a very long time, I haven't been on the second floor, so we just have to take those calculations and make the calculation on how that's gonna be.
There actually are two means of egress out of the first floor.
Yeah. Okay. So, you have two means of egress that are out there, so, you know, that, that determines your capacity, so...
And we have, and we have ramps, which means ADA, at the front, anyway. I don't know what we got in the back.
The back is steps.
Steps.
Fifty people is probably all, fifty people is probably all that first floor is gonna hold.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that's probably, I think you'd probably be stacked to get fifty people.
You probably might not get that if you have tables and chairs.
Right.
You know, saying you might not even get fifty.
But, okay. Can we knock some walls down to make it flow better? Because the rooms are like this.
That's what I was, that was my question for you. Some of the rooms right now have a doorway between them. You widen that doorway, and the one working in New Albany, that was done in the past, they just made a wide set of double doors, so that you could open it up with the two parlors with the bathroom.
Make it really wide, so it doesn't look like it's one.
George from the...
Just knock the wall out.
This is very...
It's funny.
But you can open it, but it takes more structural, structural strength.
It's like, the rooms that I'm thinking in my head, like, when you come in the front door, and you've got those rooms to the right, so you've got that little parlor in the back, and then you've got the bigger living room, I guess, with the fireplace, can that, the wall that's in between that, can that be opened up any? I mean, I know it's a little bit wider than normal now, but could you widen it even more, so that could be one big, long room?
Yes. It's very small.
Okay.
That is a very small, so it has structural integrity. So, we can't open it up if you have to create another frame or something like that, take that little somewhere else to hold the second floor.
Okay. So, how about the other side, where you have, what is it, the front office, you have the dining room, and then...
Same thing with that wall.
Same thing.
Which is interesting, we couldn't quite figure it out, but it is offset from the two, but as soon as you walk into that room on the left, that wall itself is a very small
But as soon as you walk into that room on the left, that wall itself is a variable there. That supports the, the rafter or the second floor joists that are on, that are up in that, that room upstairs. And the only way we know that is through, actually, we had access to open those pieces up.
How high is the ceiling?
How high are the ceilings? I think they're, they're taller than the normal, right? Yeah. It's more than nine feet, I think.
You can make it really good on Christmas, a nice Christmas tree.
Um, you know, they all, they all, yeah. They're even, even. Elevator and sprinkler.
Open those up. Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing from Ken, that he wants to make sure that we don't under estimate the project. So I guess for the basement, how, we wanna go, how do you, we want it to be able to support both floors?
Yeah, as at least it's existing.
Well, the, the structure that we put in the basement would just support the first floor. In order to have the second floor usable for assembly, we'd have
Well, I'm not talking about assembly, but I'm talking about office space or something up there for Boy Scouts or some other outfit like Horticultural Society or something.
I wouldn't be surprised if there's 40 or 50 pounds square foot balloon capacity at the second floor.
Yeah, there is. It's, it's rated about 40 pounds per square.
So it's okay for offices?
Yes, it's okay for offices.
But, yeah.
But wouldn't that just open it up for the public?
Not necessarily. If you control, if you control some doorway, locked doorway or something when it's not being used to keep people from congregating there. Yeah, I know you have two staircases, right?
Yeah, you get that back steep, the one in the back is really steep.
And narrow.
Yeah, one up, when you come off the kitchen, it goes up. But then the front staircase is pretty wide, but I was just thinking, if you let the community use it for office space, then you're, then you're back to the public use. And, and my thinking, but I don't know. From a fire chief's perspective, what is that?
Well, as a township, as a government, we don't want to put anybody anywhere that's not safe.
Right.
So, we don't want to do that, obviously. And there are exceptions with the historic that you can get by, if you will get by with some things for that. But when it comes to the life safety pieces, we don't, as a government, we don't want to get by. We want to follow the code.
So, any use of the second floor is going to require elevator sprinkler system?
Not necessarily on the sprinkler system. It depends on what the use is going to be.
Okay. But elevator required?
It's not required, like if, whatever you provide on the second floor can also be provided on the first floor, then you don't have to have an elevator. If someone in a wheelchair is not missing out by whatever's going up on the second floor, then it's okay. So, if, so if you decide to do a bride's dressing room up there so that you can come downstairs, you just have to be able to make provisions for a bride's dressing room on the first floor for a bride that's in a wheelchair, then you don't need the elevator.
Oh.
So, don't need the elevator if you have duplication of services or, okay. Duplicational facility.
I've heard from different clients, some clients absolutely want these sprinkler systems because they're terrified that because the building is vacant, it was designed, it's gonna burn down one day. There it goes.
Well, you would want sprinklers in this.
You'd look at that.
It's not that, it's not that expensive to, I mean, the retrofitting of the Remington Fire Station with sprinklers was, I don't know if it's a big dollar, it was $200,000. And I mean, in the scheme of things, that's really not, you know, that's not unreasonable. And the big, the big cost
That's bigger, right?
The big cost of, of, yeah, the, the fire stations are bigger. And the big cost of sprinklers is really the pit and tapping into the, into the water system.
Which is fixed if, I mean, if you tap in and all, it's
Yeah, but see, the, the, the nice thing about that is that property there is on a level water system, is it not?
Yes, we do, we get our Yeah. We did lease it out of Loveville, but it comes all the way from Union Cemetery. So it comes down here, so we might not have the water pressure that
So you need a fire pump.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it goes all the way back by the restrooms and then goes out the back of that trail on the Union Cemetery.
But when we put the line in for the bathrooms?
Well, we have, we have a
But they both come in right there for the house.
Well, we have a hideout across the street there, in front of the church. We find hideout there.
Okay.
Okay, so that's where the
I was saying, we don't get our water from
Yeah, you probably don't get your
We get it from far away.
Yeah, because of the old, it came off the Union Cemetery road. And, and since the, the new tower went in and the new pumps that went in, so we won't have a problem with that pressure there. For us, it's more volume for us at that location. But, we won't have to, because it's on a Loveland water system and not the Cincinnati water system, we won't be required to have the expensive $50,000 pit and the $25,000 master valve. Uh, because after the, if you remember, after the fires in downtown Loveland, council had passed, anybody on the system who wanted to sprinkle their buildings historic or otherwise would not have to pay those tapping fees, would not have to pay to have the master meter or that expensive pit. So we could put basically the pit in the basement, the risers in the basement in that end. So, that's a huge savings when it comes to sprinkling that building. Huge savings. Probably half.
Okay. I'm not sure if this house is small enough to qualify the, the council meeting county, it was small enough that as far as you've allowed us to get by with a domestic sprinkler. It wasn't a full-fledged sprinkler, it was just sprinklers.
Okay, I'm unfamiliar with the structure itself, but is that balloon construction? I mean, very old period, I mean, 1806 or something, right?
Not too
1906. It's, it's not balloon, it's, it's all stacked. Is it really? A platform and second floor platform? From all we can tell, it's, it's, we can't even determine if there'll be on that. Okay. So we're not 100% sure on that.
It's not rock and land?
Well, we have, we have, it's all stone on the outside and it's all broken on the outside, so.
And the walls have been firmed out?
Off of the brick?
Yeah. So, so the furring is not supporting it, it's really the exterior is the brick itself. So, you don't have balloon framing on the outside of the building as you typically are identifying that. It's interior wise, that's why I'm saying it's all stacked, the first floor built. We can't tell what's happening between where the person's second floor. And I'm, I'm thinking in terms of fire stop. And, and actually, it's not because of the fact the way our, our walls are not stacked on top of each other. So, it doesn't, it doesn't, it tends to get balloon climbing. The interior walls, well, the interior walls aren't, they're not really stacked on themselves. So, help me think through the logistics of these different uses. So, it's like the easy, the one we're all kind of thinking about first is, um, a wedding party of some sort. Smaller scale. Great for photos. Uh, we need, you know, we talked about opening up the spaces so we can circulate easily. We'd need restrooms to accommodate the, the loading. The kitchen, we'd have to upgrade.
For sure.
The kitchen is another question, it's like, can we get by with a catering kitchen or catering, kind of bring food in and serve it from the kitchen? Versus trying to upgrade that kitchen to be a commercial kitchen, which would be very expensive.
No, just catered kitchen.
Cater.
Cater. Everybody in agreement like that? Cater.
Well, that's why I want to think through these logistics, depending on what we're using. Uh, cause I think then the answer will be obvious. But like upstairs, if we're talking about an office, how does that work? I mean, is that, is it a, like we say, is it a Boy Scout troop that has an office there, but what are they actually doing there? Are they having their meetings downstairs? You know, how does that space work? Or are we talking about, you know, you mentioned hypothetically, you know, Horticultural Society has an office there. So then they come in every morning, they make coffee in the kitchen, they go upstairs to their office. But then what happens when there's a party downstairs? I mean, do we kick them out or, you know, how does that work? Can these things coexist or are they one or the other? Or does it not make sense to have an office upstairs because of the way we want to use the space downstairs?
Backstairs, but you could go up to the second floor without going through the first floor.
Okay.
And most weddings are either evening or weekends when supposedly the office people would be there.
True, true. Okay. And then I kind of like this idea of the barn. I mean, is this like a phase three down the road? Where we space plan a 1906 barn that's actually brand new?
Or you rescue one from somewhere else.
Right?
No, like a mall house or barn, they're much better.
Right. Mall owners are bar. Yeah.
Worse says township than on New Albany.
Uh, I think, um, one of the guys at El Bar mentioned the French House. They said that what happens is that the, the upstairs is like dressing rooms only, it's like a bathroom with an attached room. And the room gets one side, bride gets
That's what I was thinking.
Oh, okay. And so it's really, to look at the occupancy, there's just sort of restrooms up there. And then the bride gets one side, room gets another, and then they're ready. They want to see each other, it is a group, they're down the back stairs, the bride comes down the front stairs. And it's a small wedding, they can get married in the house, but it's a larger wedding, they just go out the back door, down the pergola to the barn. New or repurposed barn.
Or tent. Mm-hmm, or tent. And it, I mean, before you build a barn.
Or tent, yes.
Before you build a barn.
Until phase three happens, it's a tent.
Right. So if we take that scenario, so then what does the upstairs need to be? Cause that is public, right?
You just have two nice restrooms up there and two dressing rooms.
What about the structure?
Well, it's just like a dressing room and a restroom, the
It's always against the national If we can identify the livelier pitch, limit it respect for that. So, what happens is when you bump it up, it's really occupancy, it's, you know, how many people are you gonna get there and how respectable? When you're asking for assembly load, what you're looking at, you're looking at a, a loading of about 100, 125 pounds per square foot. And that's, that's where it kind of changes the whole dynamics of the structure. Uh, when you're looking at residential, commercial, or an office space, or just, uh, almost the residential, kind of offshoot of residential, which you can probably show in that, as long as you're limiting the occupancy there, then you're, then you would be fine with what you have right now. As far as structure is concerned. So, we said down the main floor is set at 49 occupants? Is that what we're saying?
What you have right now, yes.
So, is that considered assembly? Forty-nine people in one room?
No, not currently. Again, it's all what you're gonna use it for. If you're gonna use it for a wedding venue, that's a place of public assembly. And then if you go above 49 people, then that's when everything else kicks in.
Well, we're gonna have to see if, the space, like if you widen some rooms, I mean, how many people, I mean
It'd be still not a 249.
Exactly.
And you may just want a cabin at the wedding.
Yeah.
I mean, just, you know, we rent this, this facility here for 49. If you want 200, then you have to put the tent outside. And then we have the restrooms and the kitchen net, or the, the, not the commercial kitchen, but the, the catering kitchen to serve both areas. But if you want a bigger venue, then you put up the tent. If you don't, then it's a 49 cocktail party venue. And then, and, and at phase three, if you say, well, we would like the tent to be a permanent structure, then you're really putting in all of those life safety code issues in that other building. And you can separate the two with fire doors and then with alarms, so that you don't necessarily would have to sprinkle the, uh, the main house.
And if it's attached, if we just sort of look over the pergola, you could just walk into the pergola to the barn. And if, as long as there's a dressing room and accessible restroom on the first floor, then you don't technically need the elevator.
Okay, so we talked about opening up the space for circulation. Um, have we talked about, we haven't talked about heating, ventilating, air conditioning yet, but if we
I must admit, it's not air.
We need upgrades. Yeah, what do we have? How do we even know?
I don't know what's in there now, but it's definitely not gonna support, support apartments.
I think it had an air conditioning system put in because someone pirated our old one for copper.
Yeah.
Yeah? That's, that's why, that's why we got the Horticultural Society to go in there to help protect it.
But it would be based on the 49 bodies that you have in there. And that calculation would have, it'd have to be heat or air conditioning, more, more so air conditioning than anything. But the BTU is put out where there's 49 people.
Do you have parking? To take care of the 49 people?
We have to talk about that, too. No, we, we have to, we have to increase it.
But we have space between the existing parking lot and the restrooms that we could expand that parking lot if we had to.
Or, I mean, I know that sometimes the church across the street uses our parking sometimes. I don't know if we, I mean, that's down the road. I don't know if we can make a deal with them.
Yeah, that's a possibility.
Yeah.
There's, there's cars though, walking down that road.
I know.
That could be an issue.
Yeah.
So would that be convenient, get married in the church and just go across the street for the reception?
There's like three churches within, too.
Seven or eight on that street.
Yeah, the traffic on that street is doubled since we lived there fifteen years ago.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, the, the turn lane that put in on Union Cemetery helped accelerate it too. And the, the Rotary to the north. Yeah, I mean, to come off of Union Cemetery and turn left onto Lebanon Road is a challenge. Because you gotta get, gotta have to get a break in the traffic coming from the Rotary. So, sorry to seem fixated on this, but the 49 capacity, the 49 occupants, is there a way to increase that? Or are we stuck with that simply because of the constraints of the structure?
I think they're gonna try to open it up and see what they can do.
We can do some calculations, but in 49, now it's a pretty good number just
For that first one?
Because rooms are, it's just not really
Right.
Not those rooms down. Not those rooms down.
Get like 50 areas? We're not gonna get 140.
So, you figure out what the total square feet is available, according to the code, it's 50 people. It tells you how many people.
So would that, again, to expand, to tear down some walls and expand rooms?
As long as the footprint stays the same, your occupancy stays the same.
So if you've got the, I'm sticking with your scenario. So you've got a wedding party, you've got folks getting ready upstairs. And then they come down. So just because they're upstairs temporarily, they're actually part of the 49, right? We can't do 49 plus people upstairs.
It's everybody.
Because eventually they're gonna mix, they'll probably all be on the main level.
Those can go out the same two exits.
Or we're stuck at 49, right?
And it's all about the exits.
Do we need more? Any more people?
Yes. And we have two stairs, but they're not two-coat stairs, they're open stairs. So as long as the fire team allows us to use them as stairs, that's what we're stuck with. If you, we were able to use the second floor on the Lincoln County House, we built in addition with an absolute two-coat stair. And that allows us to keep our, we only have one open stair in that building, because houses exist as two-stairs. So we actually had to get a second way out, just build a pad in the second floor.
And, and actually, exterior, um, fire escape, I don't even call it a fire escape, exterior stairwell out of there, galvanized steel stairwell out of there is not that expensive. And it might be better to do that on the north side of the building to, versus actually trying to retrofit the inside of the building. It would probably never be used, kind of thing. And that's what we did in the historic district when we redid the buildings that burned there. We just put outside galvanized steel stairways so that they just exit out there instead of trying to push stairways back in, taking up valuable space if you want to put people. Because if you put them inside, then you're going to have to put up the coat, which is building some walls and they're gonna have to be fire rated. Or it's not moving.
Will that be able to work with historic structure? If we did what he just said?
The source, the historic folks would be more interested as long as it's not visually distracting. Definitely don't want it on the front.
No, I was thinking, I was thinking in the back.
Yeah, it's at the very back. Most historic, uh, regular would be okay with that, because it's
You could actually make a pretty cool thing out of it, because you could actually make a balcony and
That's what I was thinking, is you did, you could do a balcony out the back and cover that back area back there and kind of spruce it up because right now it's kind of blah. So Off to the side, yeah. Yep.
Cross the right side. So, I don't know if you can make your egress go across the roof.
Uh, yeah, there's a focus issue with that.
Is, is that flat roof?
No.
Well, not, but it's a small slope.
Okay, a small slope. Okay. It's this area here. You walk out of this, I know.
Wasn't that a carport or on the inside?
I was just wondering if you added, uh, area egress, a third one as opposed to the two, how many more people can you accommodate with a third one?
Well, technically, if you have two legal means of egress out of any floor, you're gonna have 49 again.
Right. But if you added another one, if I understood you correctly.
You still have 49.
I think that's still only one legal means of egress out of the second floor because the other stairs are
I mean, the first floor, I didn't mean the second.
Uh, the first floor already has two legal means out.
Right. And the first floor houses 49 people?
Uh, just for now, so we're thinking, just because of the size and the footprint.
And if you added another means of egress, would that increase the 49 people? Would you increase the 49 people?
It could if the footprint were big enough.
But the footprint isn't big enough.
All back to the square footage.
Yes.
The occupancy is based on number of people per person.
Looks like we're locked in.
Yeah, so, so the whole idea is like, why a bigger wedding party or a bigger celebration party? I think a lot of these historic house facilities, they say they accommodate, accommodate parties from whatever, 40 to 200. And the 200 is in the tent in the back.
Do you have experience with finding old barns?
Yeah.
Usually you call when someone has found a barn and wants to know what they need to do with it.
I would like the idea of looking, I mean, for an old barn. I think that would be really cool.
Although there are like really cool looking new barn pits that are designed a little old, like brand new old.
Be, at least we wouldn't have to wait.
Which is where that fund is more accounted. It looks like an old dairy barn, but it's absolutely
So
Loveland's old barns weren't built, I think, to withstand
No, no, they were, they were built to be absolutely lightweight, only surrounded with a hospital.
Great parks, and we were in it.
Right. So, it'd be interesting, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but to study the size of the main house. And then figure out what size, like back, if you were back in 1906, what would be a big barn that would look proportionate? So we don't build a Walmart out back. We don't want that, even though we've got room for it. But then we wouldn't have a sunflower field.
We need that sunflower field.
We must do. It was beautiful.
Yeah.
When it grew, they sold us bad seeds last year.
Just to understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, you look at the Centennial Barn.
Yeah, just to understand that proportionality between a new old barn and the main house.
So they did convert, the Centennial Barn, the original barn that they converted into a meeting venue.
Oh, I see.
Did Dave mention that courses were involved? So we could look at horse barn versus dairy barn.
Right.
Ooh, my horse barns.
Yeah.
I ride. I'm going to buy a horse one day. Have to keep it on his property.
Give it shots.
Do you have to take riding lessons? Did you? Tonight is supposed to be my riding lesson. I can't do this meeting. No, I go to great parks. Me and the thirteen-year-olds, the ten-year-olds.
Okay. So.
Riding to trusty meetings.
I would, totally.
So what's our, what's our organization? So we're looking at...
It's my favorite thing in the world.
They're magnificent. I guess category one is the fixing stuff.
If the building weather tight.
The termites, the settlement, the dry rot, that stuff.
And then to add reinforcement in the basement so that the first floor is possible for whatever use.
Right.
Possible uses from offices to assembly. It sounds like the second floor, we try to limit the use to like just like restrooms, dressing rooms.
Right.
But we would still need to fix it up.
Yeah, to fix it up, yeah, because the restrooms would be, we need two restrooms.
There's only one there now.
Is it, yeah, I'm trying to, we're talking about the, is it hardwood floor all the way on the second floor?
Yeah, we want hardwood floor.
No carpet?
No carpet.
Okay.
But the hardwood floor, all these will be done.
Right.
It's up in some way, shape, or form.
There's a lot of passion.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the first floor has one room in the carpet?
Isn't it blue or red?
The hallway.
Yeah, the hallway's got the carpet.
And there's oriental rugs in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if you fix all the floors, they're probably just setting area rather.
Yeah, but it's all hardwood under it?
Hardwood on the first floor, the second floor just has the underlayment. It's a wooden floor. It's not, it's not hardwood.
Okay.
Is the electric in there old?
No, it's all been replaced.
And that's why there are panels in the floor, we access it.
It's a romance. It's a romance. Originally it didn't have, just piped, there's still pipes in there for settling. Can't watch basement. How they did burn a house down.
They had a good parking park, that's why.
Nineteen oh six.
It looks like it was built to be fireproof with those concrete columns and the foundation.
I got a couple old pictures of it.
Oh, thank you. Cool.
The one thing trustees have to keep in mind is if you're going to bring the HVAC system up to something that is acceptable, that takes room. If you're not going to let something hang it up on the outside of the building, so that's going to take room, you know, the second floor of the basement. At some point, you're going to have to leave room for that because it should probably be a big area that's up there. And the ductwork opens up for that. Because I would imagine there's ductwork within our form what we would want to do.
Yeah.
I'm not too sure if they expanded it.
It would accommodate a twenty-five ton apartment.
Um, yeah, I'm not 100% sure. HVAC system's not here.
They locked it everything up. I'm not a structural guy.
I just thought you said we need to make sure we need room for any chases if we might need to improve that. So rather than a basement or a size.
So maybe we should buy one. A whiteboard for a meeting.
Well, I think we have closets, so those might make the chases.
Yes.
There must be some kind of chases in there. There must be something that's running up the surface of the house. I don't know where the...
That's not elevated, is it?
It's everywhere, so it's getting into the...
Yeah, so it's getting over something.
The porch. Yeah. It's not elevated.
It's elevated.
There's steps.
It's elevated.
Not much.
Huh, look at that.
So my question is, do you have to do anything on the second floor?
I have a sycamore tree.
Anything on the roof? Because it's got those heavy, doesn't it have those heavy roof panels on top?
Not anymore.
How you want?
Yeah, they were taken down. They were taken down, and that's very graceful. The roof was retrofitted. So somewhere down the road, somebody, and I don't know when it was, but it had maybe some other that's sheathing on it. Sycamore tree is what invited it, which was more modern. So whenever the roof was last done.
Shimming right up.
And what they also did was they reinforced by adding additional roof raptors adjacent, they scabbed them onto the old existing raptors that were there. The old raptors were actually bowed, they bowed, so they're not, they're not continuous. Well, they are continuous, but they have a good sagging. And then those have, that's where they scabbed on new members that have kind of taken out that sagging a lot of the, the roof sheet, you know, the nails. So that's actually a really good condition. That doesn't seem to be, as a matter of fact, everything rallied by seems to be in pretty good condition all the way down to the foundation. We see a little bit of slight, maybe there's some bricks that are out of place and some dropped joints. But the major, some of the significant parts are, the stone foundation has some pieces that have been missing from it. There's some, there's some areas that, there's some displacement that's occurred, some movement that's happened. And in the corners, there's, there's some obvious gaps, the water's actually seeping through, so there's some water down there.
I say it's always really wet down there, always.
Yeah.
Because we always have to run the humidifier and...
Yeah, so those are the things that, that kind of...
Has a drum.
Antique drums.
Yeah, one of the things.
One of the roof frames, right? Put it down right now.
Tall tree. Probably. Yeah.
Man, I was wondering.
So there was a barn back there then?
There was a barn at the base now.
Look at that. That's a barn, right?
I think that's, there's some...
Yeah, there's some barns.
There was a barn.
He said it was a barn for chickens. Chicken barn.
Yeah, there's chicken, but there's a milking barn back there that one time was deteriorated.
Amazing.
What about the windows? Do they need to be replaced?
The windows are interesting. Kathy reached out to some of our Parks Service friends to say usually the windows look like they're from another building from the eighteen seventies, or they were made to look older. And they have like the little horn decorations, but they're upside down from normal. So we weren't sure whether it was done deliberately just for a look. So she reached out to some Parks Service friends to see if they'd ever seen this type of window anywhere else. So far, no one has said, oh yeah, we saw this in other buildings. That's kind of a neutral feature in this house.
There was some other casing issue, or casing items as well, architectural that we had seen with Kathy, that were interesting as well. It didn't really have, it looked like they were brought, the windows were brought from somewhere else, recased, and they weren't part of the original building itself at the time.
Did they have the weights, counterweights on them?
I guess I wish so.
Yeah, the original ones did.
And there's one window that's now being closed back door, that's probably one that's in best shape because it's been protected for the last few years.
So it looks like we have Phase One, getting it structurally.
Are all your questions being answered?
Well, summer kitchen, the summer kitchen building.
Yeah, that's interesting.
That's falling apart.
Yes. The question is, did you want to try to save it?
Do we need to save it?
It depends if you have a use for it.
Do we have a use for it?
Only if you use for the storage building or...
The roof's actually... As far as I can see, I was really surprised.
It's still standing.
I thought I'd go out and see that the roof falling apart, but it's actually, it's in good shape. It's the walls, all the exterior walls are, you know, there's some significant deterioration with a significant amount of rebuild in those walls.
But you also need new foundations. One of the reasons why it's bad shape maybe, it doesn't have very deep foundations and it's just...
So that would be super expensive.
But what, what about internal storage? If we were to have like sit-down dinner or something in there at part of the venue, we'd have to store our tables and things like that for something else. Is there any capacity right now to store? Would that be stored on the second floor or something?
Well, that question is like, without an elevator?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or could you use the outdoor kitchen rebuild or something for storage?
Well, that would be a good question. It's close by. The best use for it is storage. Otherwise, you'd kick the Boy Scouts out and use their metal building, which is a little further away.
Yeah, it's a little further away.
So we need to paint it, make it look nice.
Of course.
I think so, too.
Yeah, there's, there's only one ingress egress, isn't there? And that's in the rear.
One from the inside, there is one from the outside.
Yeah, the one from the outside is what I was thinking.
Oh, yeah, because it's got those little doors that open up in the back.
The smart doors.
Yeah.
Is, is it located where you want it to be located?
The summer kitchen?
Yeah. Or is it would be in the way of your barn right there?
No, it's just right off the side.
It's off the side.
I was just thinking it's probably cheaper to tear it down and use, build another shed that looks like it goes with the building. Yeah, the period, but you don't...
You can construct it.
Yeah, you can construct it.
Yeah, you would spend much more money, you know, mason to shore up, keep your roof structure, and then try to take out pieces of it because literally it's sand or, you know, it's the clay. And the clay is turned into, back into clay. It's going to compact its original elements at that point. So it's a matter of taking pieces out, somebody doing that, and maybe it has to be a very good mason to do that and very skilled. And it would be quite expensive to kind of recreate that. If it's, if it's something that was started really recreated, I would say yes, but if it's not something of significance.
It doesn't have a lot of...
Yeah.
It doesn't have good furniture.
I don't, I don't, I don't see any need to save it. Other than, do you have storage capacity for tables and things like that somewhere?
It's very limited for that. Actually, there's an interior wall.
But if we could do it in the ba, I mean, put the storage and so on in the basement, I could live with that.
I wouldn't, I don't know, I wouldn't do anything in the basement. It's just so steep to get down those steps. I would just rebuild another, like a shed that's out back. Now you could do that something cheaper.
Like, Phil and I think the barn, the green barn needs to go, too. Yeah.
But you could use that for storage for the short term, I guess.
Right. Yeah.
Use the new old barn for the storage long term.
Right.
Depends on what you want to store. When you say storage, what are you really trying to store?
Right.
I'm thinking tables, chairs, things like that.
But I believe the Boy Scouts have an extensive amount of equipment in that building. Like, they built cabinets and all kinds of stuff into, on the walls and, like, it's pretty elaborate. They finished the floor inside it. They sunk a lot of money into that.
So can we pick it up and move it? Okay.
Floors doesn't sound like you could do it. I mean, you could move, move the structure, maybe.
Or what if you built a barn, say like you build a barn out back, but you build part of it so it has like a little storage area in it where the Boy Scouts can put their stuff? We could put our chairs and tables and then the rest of it's just open.
You mean on Phase Two or Three?
Well, whatever, Phase Three, Four, whatever.
I mean, there's, I mean, we could technically move the Boy Scouts to Sims or Home of the Brave. I mean, we could work that out with the Boy Scouts. I mean, I don't want to...
Well, I was just thinking you'd put it on the end of the building in some way, shape, or form and kind of hide it and make it usable for storage.
We'll get a new service garage. We can probably have one of the other garages.
Yeah. All right, so we're, do we know where we're at?
So we got, so we're fixing, like, this category is correcting, correcting things. So dry rot, termite, settlement, waterproofing, repointing, masonry. Is there anything else?
Yeah, any window with issues, repointing. Yeah, anything exterior or otherwise, get rid of Phase One.
And then we have another category of opening up. So we're trying to open up the first floor.
Well, first, we'd have structural reinforcement of the first floor, so first floor so that it be capable of...
That's part of the remediation, I think.
Oh, okay.
I see that's sort of adding.
Structural reinforcement, yeah.
Yeah, we consider that more of an add. Yeah, because we were taking, taking the building up to use itself, so it's really kind of phased, like almost another phase to what they're going to do, other than just repairing the building to make sure it's going to withstand what the load is that it can take now.
Right.
So that's kind of what we're looking at now. Now, the next part of that would be is looking at how do we increase the strength of that building, so that would be another part of what we can, that we're looking at.
And then if we are opening something up that is bearing, then, yeah, that's all interrelated. Right? Okay.
That's your wish list at that point. It becomes a wish list.
So then the third category is things like sprinklers, HVAC, catering kitchen, restrooms, first and second floor. Okay. And then I was thinking fourth category, cosmetic, floor refinishing, repainting. And then the fifth category would be the new old barn. What else? Did I miss something?
No, you got it all right.
So I guess we need to look at all that. We need to figure out what it's going to take to design it. We need to put a cost on it for construction. And then we need to sink in what Joe says we can afford and figure out a way...
For Phase One.
You know, what we can pay off, you know, if we have to do, do this in chunks.
Yeah. Because we want to make it affordable.
What kind of timeframe are you talking?
What we can afford.
Depends on the cost.
Ten years out?
Hope not, hope not. Hope it's faster.
It could be, depending on the cost. So I guess we need to see what it's going to take to get structurally sound first. And that's going to set everything in motion, I guess.
The quicker it's done, the quicker it becomes self-sustaining.
Right. And so we want to make sure that everybody in the committee has a voice. So if you, if we need to set you up with Bill, so you can take a tour, so you can start seeing things that what we're talking about, so you know. And if you want to add anything or take anything away, you know, it's your committee, too. It's just not us. We want to make sure you are part of this.
Just have to sign a release of liability.
Oh, yeah. Because you'd walk in all of a sudden.
I have to say, this house is way better shaped than any other house we've looked at.
Oh, good.
Really?
Because we had somebody tell us that it wasn't structurally sound. We couldn't have anybody in it.
Oh, no, it's, it's in great shape.
I mean, the one day he was.
He's got ten animals around.
Yeah, he was there.
He took very good care of it.
Yes, he did.
And he's, do you see him? He still comes and walks there.
Occasionally.
Yeah, that cute.
It's a nice park. Very nice park.
It's a very nice park.
I sold it to the township, so they can always have it.
Right, we're glad too.
We're very glad.
As far as the house is concerned, you know, that, that could disappear overnight. If that tornado had been a few hundred yards to the east, it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't be here. But, uh, you know, preserve the most, for the green space and the trails and I think a lot of people appreciate that.
A lot of people appreciate it.
Oh, you haven't repaid the trails and put the little books down.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. It'd be a great project for us because I could bring my dog to the project site.
Right.
Kind of to retrieve.
There you go.
She seemed to be pretty happy.
Yes, she was.
Yeah. Get out of that.
So it'll, we're getting ready to decorate it for, we do that Halloween tray out there.
That was awesome last year. My grandkids loved it.
We're trying to make it a little better every year, as long as people don't steal anything. We can add to it every year just a little bit.
So the only good thing about camping in a building that was in more of a crappish case is you could do it from the haunted house theme.
That's true.
There's that log cabin back there that we were thinking would be very haunted house.
Since they say it's structurally sound, maybe that's what we can do right now.
What about the, did we talk about the roof? I can't remember.
He said it was in good shape.
Yeah, it was in good shape.
I asked about it.
Yeah, I thought you were talking about the kitchen, the, the outside kitchen thing.
Yeah.
The main house roof. Okay.
Both roofs are in good shape.
Okay.
Yeah, both roofs are in good shape. The, the, the house itself, um, somebody's done, has redone the roof itself or roofing. Not only just the shingles or the materials on top of the structure. So they actually put plywood, uh, plywood down, so it's a, and then they, what they've done is they sistered the old roof raptors. So they put new raptors right adjacent to the old ones and then nailed together. Because the old raptors, you can actually see a bow in them, uh, that are there. And then by putting the new pieces on, it's allowed it to, to be able to get the support of the building.
Do you remember when we did that day? The, the roof?
I did.
Oh, you did it before you sold it to us?
Oh, yeah, that was in, uh, eighty-nine.
Okay.
About eighty-eight, eighty-nine.
Eleven plus twenty-one, thirty, that's good, thirty-three years or thirty-two years?
Yeah, there are some, uh, purple studs in there that, that show some signs of wear and tear, probably that they need to be, need some retrofitting of those. But beyond that, it's, it's a decent condition.
The original roof, it has concrete shingles on it.
Okay.
There's one hundred.
What, the hundred year variety?
That's what I was asking. You remember Halloween? And that's what caused it.
It's a piece and that's why.
Yeah. Oh, rafter if it does.
And it's a fairly steep roof, so it doesn't get ground and snow over there. So you don't have a lot of, you don't have a lot of snow.
Way.
Way up there.
Is there insulation either?
No, there's no insulation. Not just there, there is insulation in the attic though. There's, there's an attic floor that, because it's all storage up there. And underneath that flat, underneath that, underneath that attic floor, there's all insulation up there.
Okay.
How about the chimney? Is that okay? Good shape?
As far as what we saw, it's pretty good shape. We didn't see any kind of signs of deterioration.
He's got a clay wire.
What the?
No, you're sure.
What's that, you said dark place, what?
Doesn't work here?
They said they didn't have electricity way back when.
It has stainless steel and the upstairs are, puts of stainless steel.
I assume the flues closed, you don't have birds or animals getting into the house, right?
I think they had bats. They had bats. Didn't we talk about bats? Didn't we have a bat problem? Did we not have a bat problem? Didn't, I think the, I think the, um, um.
Horticulture.
Horticulture society told me they had some bat issues.
And they did one of the shots.
We've always had bats since day one. We've been there and have started something because we.
You know, there are bats in, in the area.
That's okay. Bats are endangered. They eat all the.
Bat houses are in the park.
We have bat houses in the park. Yeah. Our bats eat all our mosquitoes, so we like them. Bats are our friends.
Okay, so what's the next step then?
Okay, the next step is we're writing a report of existing conditions to deliver October twelfth. And then after that, uh, we'll be doing conceptual design sketches based on what we just talked about. In sometime November, we'll deliver. Well, we'll be emailing right back and forth. What do you think of this layout? What do you think of this layout? Get comments and then let everyone have their agrees on one. We'll put that into the next report that will also have recommendations. So the, the initial report is just what you have and anything that can be fixed regardless of what you use the house for.
Is there any cost estimate going with that?
Uh, there'll be, each one will be a little more detailed. When we get to the final report before the end of the year, that will have what everyone's decided. This, this is the plan that we like. These are the features we like, what we want to do. And then we'll have the estimate at that point will be pretty detailed.
So we won't have an estimate on what it takes to fix the basement structurally and so on until the end of the year?
Well, we might actually have a draft.
Okay.
There'll be a draft before stage. It'll have the initial estimate. And then as things change, you know, people have comments and things getting around, there'll be a final estimate with the final draft.
And you'll include everybody on the committee?
Yeah, we just need to get, it's only, we need to get emailed everything to.
Or you can email it to me and I can email that. That makes me feel pretty good.
Some of these, some of these grants we're going for, one of them, Joe, refresh my memory, were, wasn't some of the money available to work on the property? And how much?
I don't know how much.
Well, that's kind of why I'm, I'm interested in cost estimate earlier than the end of the year if possible. At least on that phase of it.
Okay.
Because right now, we're told we can't use it, you know? And the first thing we ought to try and do is figure out what it takes to be able to use it in its current condition or otherwise. And if we can get a, if we can get a cost estimate for that kind of thing, then we can go after, put that in as part of our grant process and so on, see if we can earmark some money.
Do you remember what they said, when you can't use it?
That didn't say we couldn't use it. We're looking at a grant that will cover that kind of concept, so, and we're going after it.
I thought you said somebody told you you can't.
Yeah, I think we have structural company come in.
Yeah, we get structural people come in here and tell us that we closed it down. We've got people out of there.
Because they were using it for assembly uses and we weren't approved for assembly uses.
But the assembly's got to be, what, twenty-five people or less than forty-nine? I don't know. Were we using that many people in there? I know we, we've been to some dinners and things in there.
A lot of the people in that first floor.
There, there isn't floor damage, there isn't floor damage.
One time to the Christmas party.
That could make it unsafe.
Okay.
I can understand, but I don't know if there's anything else beyond that.
Well, I, I thought the comments really were centered around the basement support structure.
Yeah, it was both. It was the flooring and the support.
Okay.
And, and maybe they were just saying this house has not been officially approved for assembly use, like camp's using it for something.
Right.
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
I have that much notice. Do you have any paperwork on when the house was listed as historic?
Yes.
Okay.
I can email to you. I emailed the Ohio Historical Society and they emailed me the, the packet that was sent in.
Okay, awesome.
And you have that?
Okay, yeah. He sent that to me. I can include the report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Are there any questions? Several come in and just start writing.
Okay.
So who do we talk to about taking a tour?
Um, Kim.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you, if you guys don't mind giving me your email address.
Yeah, it's ball@aol.org.
Then you can get those creative juices flowing.
Becker1. At Hughes.net.
Becker1?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Number one?
At Hughes.net. Okay, then I have everybody else's emails.
So from Tiara and I, if anybody has any questions for us, they'll send them to you.
Yep.
And if we have questions already going, also they'll send those to you too.
Yeah, I'll just first. Alright, and then I'll get something going with Bill and then we can get you guys in on the tour.
Have to sign a waiver then. Right? Yeah, a release.
Release the liability.
Okay, is there anything else on this topic?
No, unless you guys have questions you need answered. Okay, was that helpful?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Just want to make sure you guys didn't waste your time coming down here and making that up.
I guess you're not trying to put a Starbucks in there?
No, no, next Starbucks.
A Chipotle.
Everyone said this.
Fields are.
It's going to be, um, this, uh, not.
Or maybe they're just serving. Okay, we have another topic that I don't know if anybody's interested in or not.
There was a question. Oh, batting cages.
Anyone not interested in hearing about Home of the Brave request for Waddell Youth Baseball Organization for batting cages? It's free to leave.
Yeah, we've got one more thing, batting cages.
Okay, I thought. Appreciate you being here. Very happy to find you.
Thanks, everybody.
That was a good mention.
Yeah. Waiting for noise level to come down. In my old age, my hearing, you know, you can only hear out of one ear at a time.
Okay, so batting cages.
Alright, uh, next, next item of business is Home of the Brave request for LYBO for batting cages. We had this come up in a meeting two months ago. And I said that I would talk with Mike Wagner. And I met with him on a Saturday morning over at, uh, Home of the Brave Park at the ball fields and so on. We walked and talked and so on. I think we had a little bit of heartburn when it came up because he was talking about concrete pad and things like that. And that's why we said, well, we need to find out more information about this. But basically, um, I think LYBO is hosting three tournaments a year in our park. And they would like to do more with, with our concurrence and it could even be a profit sharing move. Okay, because right now, they're making money and they got too much money in their kitty and they're willing to pay to put in these batting cages. So there was some concern about would they fit, where would they fit, the concrete base and so on. So we talked about these things. And, um, they are willing to pay for these things, but I guess one of the concerns that they have is, we had some, um, how, how shall we say it? Some heartburn at LYBO with the previous management team. Where they were getting control of scheduling our fields and then they were renting them to other teams. Okay, and we weren't getting any of the money or anything, any recognition. So we basically shut them off, said you don't get any fields anymore. And then we worked out a deal after that and we had some good management come in, Mike Kapasowski, whatever.
Yeah, I just saw Matt Kaps because I can't.
Matt Kaps, Matt Kaps, yeah, yeah. We work very well with him. His, his son is now aged out of that organization and so on. So that's why Mike, this is Mike Wagner's first year as president. But, uh, they're willing to pay for this stuff, but what they want to do is they want to have a good working relationship with us. They don't want to pump the money in to doing the batting cages and then be shut out. So it's incumbent upon both sides to really work together to keep any hassle from coming in nice. I basically said, well, if that happens, Mike, um, you can chalk it up as the cost of using the fields in the past. So anyway, uh, we talked about the concrete pad. First, first off, we marked off distances and so on, about fifteen foot wide and about, uh, sixty, seventy feet long. It will be, uh, caged in a sense. It will, no, no, uh, no pitching machines. It will be humans pitching with the, the cutout throwing right or left handed. And they said that they have enough coaches to do that, to pitch to the batters. And when the batters hit the ball and so on, there will be wire mesh and everything hanging off of a frame that will contain the ball. And secondly, uh, one of, one of the provisions, because when you have wire fencing and mesh and so on next to grass, they don't get along very well. So we can have chain pull that'll raise this stuff so you can still mow. Okay, close, cut down on the maintenance cost. And they're willing to consider not, not concrete pad, but maybe crushed gravel. Okay, which is easier if we ever had to remove it or move it kind of thing. Uh, as long as they have to proviso of putting perhaps astroturf or something over the top of it. Okay? And I think these are all good ideas. It's the kind of thing I think I can get behind. But I wanted to give you a feedback on all those issues that we talked about.
Are we talking about just one? Are we talking about two?
Two. Uh, there's six, seven and eight are the ball fields over there. Six is the big major league park with the lights and the scoreboard and everything else. Seven and eight are the other two. They run with space between them. And they will put one on fifteen feet by seventy on one side of, outside, uh, outside the, the field itself. Outside the fence. Okay, and then the other one, maybe fifteen feet in between to the other one on the other side. One on next to field seven and one on next to field eight. And they would run, they would probably be batting away from, um, the backstops and so on for both of those fields.
Do we have a layout?
Uh, no, that was one thing. They, they had seen these things and they had a whole bunch of other stuff with it at, uh, some place in Indiana, Newcastle or somewhere in Indiana. Where one of the guys on their, um, management committee, if you will. I don't know, vice president or secretary treasurer, one, one of the officers set them up to go to a tournament at this Newcastle, Indiana. I'm probably saying the wrong name, but it's in Indiana. And they had, uh, they saw all this stuff and they had batting tees and all this kind of stuff for tee, like tee ball, where the kids could loosen up before they got in batting cages. And I told them I didn't really like that idea because the balls are too loose and so on, you know, hazardous. But, um, they're willing to work with us. But I said, if you have contacts with this community, which this guy did, to get into the tournament up there, why don't you get us a copy of plans and we can just look at them? And so they took that on as a, as a, an item, but I haven't heard anything back. And I told them, you're our contact, you know, that, you talk to all of us.
I can reach back out to him and ask him.
Okay, well, I can, I can do it too, you know, how, how are you doing with getting?
How these things fit in with our existing ball fields and understand, you know, are they going to be in the way? Or are they out of the way of, of when a game is being played?
Uh, they'd be out of the way.
Are you going to hit a ball and it lands on the roof of the batting cage?
These batting cages and so on are really meant for practices.
Well, I understand that. I'm just saying, are you going to be, you know, running backwards, catch a ball and you run into the batting cage?
No.
Oh, I thought, yeah, it's going to be on the outside.
It's going to be on the outside of the fence containing the field.
That's why I need to see a sketch because I don't really understand where these are going.
Okay.
I just, yeah, I want to see the, you know, the map of the park and just a rectangle where these things.
I, I can sketch that up for where it would be and what the extent would be. But I won't have copies of the plans because they're going to try and get them from this place in Indiana.
Okay, and then how tall are they?
Uh, probably fifteen, twenty feet.
Do we have an estimated cost?
They're paying for it.
They're paying for it.
We're not.
Oh, they're paying.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, we're not.
That's why I can get behind it real easy.
Yeah.
There's an existing one in Camp Denison right now. It's in the Indian Hill Park. There's a, it rarely gets used, so hopefully ours won't be in that shape. But it's kind of off the side, uh, by that big sport park. It's right in the vicinity of the restaurant.
Okay.
Want to check it out, but it has, it's got a mesh around it.
Now, um, there were, there were two other items. There were two other items that Mike and I talked about and they really concern the, the tournaments that they run there, the three per year that they'd like to do more of.
Can I just say one thing about tournaments? Tournaments bring a lot of money into the township. Restaurants, shopping, you in between games, you run to, I mean, we don't really have a target you'd have to run across. But, you know, coal wells maybe.
They gas up.
Yeah, gas up. It brings a lot of money in, so it's, it's nice to have that. So I'm all behind tournaments.
Okay. Uh, and what he said is they're making money off these tournaments.
Oh, I'm sure.
And that's why they have this money to invest. But they also said if we, if they could do more tournaments, three, maybe to go five, six or something like that. Uh, then it, and running their concessions and so on out of the concession stand uh, for those kinds of events, they would make enough money that they would share with the township.
Yeah.
Okay? So that's enlightening. Uh, but there are a couple of safety, one safety issue and one other issue that's long term. The long term issue is it's inconvenient with these three fields that are in use for bathroom facilities. They have to walk a long way over to behind, past the monument, uh, to go to the bathroom. Or they have to go over to the splice pad area. And as far removed from where the activity is. Those are complaints from people.
Yeah, I can see that.
I said, well, in short term, long term concession stand, we were talking about restrooms and all, all this kind of stuff. But we got too expensive to put an upper deck on it and all that. That's why this concession stand is there. But if we could put in the short term, put porta potties, but hide them behind some fencing or something like we've done near the box lacrosse thing, something like that would. I mean, they would, they would get more of it to pay for those kinds of things than what we would for letting them use the fields. That's, that's, details would be worked out, but yes. Okay? But they still need restroom facility or porta potties or something when they don't have tournaments and they're just playing league games. And if we're paying for those porta potties, maybe that gets factored into the, the ten dollars a head or something that we're charging them to use our fields anyway, right? For the kids. So, you know what I'm saying? Maybe it's, maybe it's ten fifty now instead of ten.
Yeah. I don't really think, I don't know how expensive porta potties are. Probably not that expensive.
They're eighty-two dollars a month.
Okay.
Okay.
But the, the other thing is, it's a safety issue, and it pertains mostly, although all three fields, but mostly to the major league field, major league size field. And that is foul balls going straight up and back into the crowd.
So we need the fence.
So we need a.
You know, like a net.
Maybe a mesh net or something that covers the, the pathways between and covers the bleachers or something.
Okay.
Okay. And I think he's written a note to the township that Kim passed on about those two items, porta potties and the netting. But if you do the netting on one field, why don't you need to do it on all the fields? Well, I'm just saying, those, that's where most of the foul balls coming back are the high hardwoods, if you will, are on the major league field, but the other two could benefit from it at that location. And I. I would think for liability reasons, if you're going to do one, you'd have to do all three. Yeah, I would, I would recommend we do all three. But I'm just throwing that out for, for something. If you want more details and so on, like, okay, we'll go look at the one in Camp Denison, see what they've got, we'll push Mike to see how he's doing on getting copies of, of the design and so on that he wanted to do, but, and we have an opportunity to talk with him about that. And I threw out the idea of him wanting to do more tournaments. Okay? So that kind of summarizes my contacts with him and so on. Very, very nice, very pleasant to talk to, very appreciative of, of what Simms Township is providing with facilities, especially the, the new one. We don't have dugouts per se, but we call them dugouts. I mean, the, the security, the, the, all the improvements we've made. We talked about, also talked about increasing the size of the infield on seven and eight. They're all, all for that, and I think they're paying for it, they're going to pay for it. Open it up for older kids to use it inside, still inside the pens lines, so on.
Okay.
And gives, gives more kids an opportunity to play over there than just the little kids and little bigger. So, we've already talked about, discussed and approved that, that they're paying for. But this other thing is, the batting cages, they're willing to pay for it. They said they've been looking for quite some time for the right place to put them,